Good afternoon, welcome to the Board of Commissioners special call meeting, our work session for September 27th, 2016. We're glad you're with us today. Our first tab is Community Development Agency. There's two items. In your agenda book, it's listed as item one and item two. We're going to take item two first. So Dana Johnson, our Director of Community Development, if you'd come up and present our guests, or introduce our guests, please.
I am going to introduce Catherine Lawler and Mike Harris to come up and give a presentation, but I'd like to give a little bit of background information as we kind of get into this presentation and what this presentation is about today. This particular presentation is about senior housing. We have a long history of doing senior housing in Cobb County. We were one of the leaders in metropolitan Atlanta to prepare for the aging of our population. And in the last few years, there's been a lot of conversations about our codes of ordinances as it relates to the Community Care Retirement Community zoning code. And I just kind of want to just kind of give you a brief introduction for the public. Back in 2008, the Board adopted the Continuing Care Retirement Community ordinance. This was done as a collaboration with industry experts, staff, and community associations who all had a voice in this drafting. In 2013, based upon some concerns with the ordinance, the Board, in their wisdom, put in a moratorium and asked for some changes to happen with this particular ordinance. In 2015, sorry, and the, no changes were made at that time because the same committee was brought back together and agreement could not come from the committee as to any changes to the code at that time. In 2015, the Board of Commissioners heard a zoning case for a Continuing Care Retirement Community, and that particular zoning was denied. At the end of that zoning, a moratorium was put back in place the next month, and staff was directed to bring forward changes to the zoning code again. In February of this year, staff brought forward some code changes to the RSL and CCRC codes, and the Board was not comfortable with the changes as a whole, as a consensus, on the recommendations that were brought forward. And staff was requested to contact the Atlanta Regional Commission and get the Atlanta Regional Commission's help in allowing all of us to understand kind of what we're facing as it relates to the demographic shifts happening in the country, as well as some of the market, the market for senior housing, and how that's changing as well. And so with that introduction, I would like to introduce Ms. Catherine Lawler, who is the Manager of Aging and Health Resources Division at the Atlanta Regional Commission, as well as Mr. Mike Harris, who is President of Cornerstone Senior Living, who is brought under contract to help us answer these questions that were asked.
Good afternoon. It's wonderful to be here with you. I just wanted to add a couple other thoughts to Dana's background and from the Atlanta Regional Commission. We were thrilled to be called on to assist with this, as it's been our great pleasure to partner with Cobb County and many other jurisdictions in the metro region as they contemplate how to support their rapidly growing older adult population. And as you are well aware, Cobb has one of those rapidly growing older adult populations. And in particular, your growth tends to come from some of those people who were really part of making Cobb County who it is today. A large settlement pattern in history from the several decades ago, and those people have called Cobb County home, and we want to commend this Commission's efforts and those before it to continue to make sure that those people who have long been leaders and community members of Cobb can continue to live here throughout their lifetime. It was our pleasure to partner with you for a number of reasons. One will always come when you call, no matter what. But in particular, right now, there is so much changing in the senior housing industry. The baby boomers are reshaping this, like they have reshaped every other sector and part of their lives that they've moved through. And so the, we wanted to provide, have a practical opportunity, and we're grateful that you all stepped forward to really explore both what you need now, but how do you set the table so that you are ready for what is needed tomorrow? Because this industry couldn't be changing any faster, and we know that Cobb County is a place that wants to be the home of innovation, and we want to make sure that you have the opportunity and you have the rules and regulations you need to support everybody today, but be ready for tomorrow. So it's my pleasure, it's been wonderful to work with Mike Harris, and we're going to let him give you a bit of his analysis and findings, and then we'll be here throughout your entire process as you continue to contemplate these issues over the weeks, months, years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon. My name is Mike Harris. I'm President of Cornerstone Senior Living. I'm delighted to be with you today. I've been given about 10 minutes to cover about two months' worth of effort, so we're going to go quickly today. I wanted to lead off by just saying, I'm not here today to lecture, or lobby, or lament development processes in Cobb County, but rather hopefully to inform and encourage as you look toward the future. You have a great opportunity to grow this industry, to serve your own residents in the coming years. I also want to say I have the opportunity to address boards like this all over the country, have done so for 30 years. I appreciate what you do. It is a thankless job many times, so I appreciate what you do on behalf of the citizens of Cobb County. I hope you can see this presentation as we go through. Where am I directing it? Okay. The overview is that we're going to quickly talk about defining senior living in the context of Cobb County and the industry. Who is that market that we're talking about, the trends coming as far as older adults are concerned? A little bit of description of your RSL, Residential Senior Living, and your Continuing Care definitions, and the numbers of facilities that are currently operating in Cobb County. And finally, trends and the planning process responding to the trends going forward. Three main takeaways. So I wanted to, with a brief presentation, I hope these are the three things you take away from today. First and foremost, your Cobb County older adult population, 65 and older population is projected to grow 135% over the course of the next 25 years. Most of that's internal growth. It's not in migration. It's the aging of your population. Second takeaway, I hope you will embrace senior living as a strategy, a community development strategy, an economic development strategy, as a way of serving your constituents. They want to continue living in Columbia, in Cobb County. Senior living growth is going to be a facility to help make that happen. Lastly, managed growth versus controlled growth. It's a collaborative effort that a lot of counties have embraced in order to make sure the growth is serving the needs of the population. Briefly, an introduction of myself. I'm President of Cornerstone Senior Living. I've earned a certification from Leading Age, the largest nonprofit association for senior living across the country, as a Certified Adult Services Provider Fellow. All that means is I've studied a lot, written a lot, and gotten the good housekeeping stamp of approval. 30 years in the senior living industry, following a seven-year career with the General Electric Company. I'm the closest thing to a senior living expert many of you will ever come in contact with. That being said, I hope we continue, I continue to learn every year, every month, as the industry continues to change. Our company is based in Augusta, Georgia. We have a national practice. We've worked in 26 different states, exclusive to senior living. We only do senior living development. Roughly a billion dollars' worth of development predominantly in the continuing care arena. We are in the marketing, management, and development arenas in senior living. Thank you. Before we start, just a disclaimer or qualifier. When we talk about age and aging, age is actually a little bit of a relative thing. We tend to talk about chronological age, how many birthdays have I had? But there's also physiological age, how old does my body say that I am? I've met a bunch of young 90-year-olds and a few old 60-year-olds. And the psychological age, how do I feel? All of those types of aging are represented in Cobb County today, and it influences the type of senior housing, senior living that folks pursue. You can't lump all older adults together, and you can't lump all senior living together. When you hear the term senior living, it conjures up different images, some positive, some negative. So I thought I'd take a minute and give you some overview of what senior living looks like in America, and then more specifically in Cobb County. The graph before you has an age category at the top, 65 through 90-plus. Down at the bottom are the different outpatient or home-delivered services, all the way through inpatient institutional services. All this graph is showing is that when we talk about seniors and senior aging, it covers a lot of the waterfront. The needs and desires of a 65-year-old are frequently different than the needs and desires of an 80-year-old. I define senior living predominantly as the single-family home where a 65-year-old individual or couple reside. It's probably the home they raised their family in. They've probably been in it 10, 20, 30, 40 years. It is the largest segment of senior living in America, the largest segment of senior living in Cobb County. Folks tend to want to stay home as long as they can, as long as they feel safe, as long as they feel comfortable. As those transitions begin to take place, we then get into this other myriad of senior living descriptions. Downsizing, exchanging one larger residence for a smaller residence, moving into an active adult community, an AAC. These are usually planned developments, limited services, targeting a 55 and older population. Average age in there is going to be in the 70-year-old range. Del Webb is one of the nation's leading developers of active adult communities. Independent living communities, housing with no or limited services, age segregated, sometimes for-profit developed, sometimes nonprofit developed. And then you begin connecting elements of the continuum to that independent living. Independent living with assisted living, the Continuing Care Retirement Community that includes assisted living or personal care, as it's called in Georgia, and skilled nursing care, and a myriad of additional services. And then finally, single-site assisted living, personal care homes, some of those with a focus on cognitive diseases, memory care facilities, Alzheimer's facilities, and finally, skilled nursing facilities. The chart in front of you is just there. When I show this to different groups, most folks are usually surprised to find out that the largest penetration, if you will, of the older adult market is the skilled nursing facility. Roughly 1.6 million beds across the United States. Second-largest segment of that is the standalone assisted living, personal care market. That has grown dramatically just over the last 25 years. Interestingly enough, when you look at the last category, independent living, housing, it's just housing, no services, that's the fastest-growing segment of the senior living industry, and it will be for Cobb County as well. Let's talk about the market, the consumer for senior living. We've all heard these descriptors of the different generations. We're going to focus today on the silent generation and the boomer generation, the baby boom generation. That's aging America today. The silent generation is the World War II, post-World War II generation, my parents, and I'm part of the baby boom generation. I don't know that anybody else has reached that plateau in your life. The baby boom generation is the largest influx of older adults that our country has ever seen, 76 million that were born after World War II, and they're just beginning to crest. The growth is dramatic, and it's going to go for a long time, about 15 years before those last baby boomers age into senior living. Two basic statistics that I want to touch on. The United States population has grown from 35 million in the year 2000 to 82.3 million projected for 2040, and that's the 65 and older population. If you listen to AARP, you're part of the older generation at age 50. We tend to draw the line at age 65 when we talk about housing, but again, it's not universal. We have folks who are in their 50s who've made that transition, and folks in their 90s who are saying they're not old enough yet to make that move. When you look at Cobb County's numbers, for 2016, the projection is 85,000 older adults, 65 and older, currently in the county, but the projections are dramatic, growing to nearly 200,000 over the course of the next 25 years. I won't go through and explain your designation for senior housing. You have two basic categories, residential senior living and continuing care. Under the residential senior living, two different classifications, the non-supportive housing and supportive housing. What distinguishes one from the other is the services that are provided. In the non-supportive, that is to be housing with no services according to your regulations, while the supportive housing can provide a myriad of services. The continuing care definition, as we discussed earlier, adds additional services and adds an additional level of care, which would be the skilled nursing component. We went through and did an analysis from licensing information from the state of Georgia in the county, and there's an asterisk at the top that in effect says, "My classification could be different than your classification." But as we classified the current licensed senior housing in Cobb County, there were three facilities that fit that residential senior living, non-supportive designation, no active adult in Cobb County that we could identify. A total of, I have to do the math on this, 107 of the residential senior living supportive housing, the great majority being in the form of smaller personal care homes. The licensing in the state of Georgia says any personal care facility with 24 beds or less would receive that personal care designation. The majority of those facilities would have 12 to 15 beds, some a little smaller, some a little larger. And then the personal care assisted living large category, 11 of those facilities, and those would be the ones that would have 30, 50, 60, 80, 100 such beds. Regional and national companies that would own and operate those communities locally. One Continuing Care Retirement Community, the Presbyterian Homes in Ostelle, Georgia, and the skilled nursing facilities, while it doesn't fit your designation, there's a different classification. In senior living, it's a part of that continuum, 14 of those facilities in the county. A total of 115 facilities. While that number is important to see and understand, given the growth in the population going forward, you would need to more than double the number of facilities, forget for a moment the number of beds, more than double the number of facilities over the course of the next 25 years, just to keep up with the same market penetration rate. And the statistics are saying, the trends are saying, there's going to be more demand. There's more because of the growth in the market in Cobb County, and because that market is saying, "We want to live in facilities like these. We want to have the convenience, the safety that comes from living in these facilities." Other trends are these facilities, different descriptions of senior living facilities will likely be smaller in the future. Some of that's driven by the financial markets, some of that's driven by zoning, some of that's driven by, the next point on there, which is market segmentation. Older adults are classifying themselves, categorizing themselves by economic strata or by interest lifestyle, or by affinity group. And as a result, those facilities serving that affinity group or that lifestyle group would be a smaller facility. Technology is on the rise. I've witnessed about three rounds of different technology advances in senior living in my career. The high growth in technology is coming in the next 15 to 20 years. In Japan in particular, they are testing service robots. They call them CareBots, and it is the literal robot who responds to the owner's command. It's not ready for primetime yet, but it's coming. Will that supplant the need for senior living housing? The answer is no. It will support senior living housing, according to the prognosticators. Last couple of trends, reimbursement. Public policy is driving changes in the senior living industry. We work at the national level with CMS for Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, at local levels for Medicaid programs, at the state level, and everybody's budgets are stressed, and everybody sees this rising tide of older adults. Right now, no one has solved the math, but there's a lot of smart people working on that. Finally, innovation, market innovation, market-driven innovation, where the traditional models of senior living are morphing into different looks and feels, including home community delivered services. Last slide, and then we'll field a few questions here. So what is a commission, or what is a group of planners to do with this data, with this information? The last bullet point that I made to you is, I, not to instruct, but to suggest, embracing continued expansion, development of senior living facilities is good business. It's good for your constituents, who are the ones who are aging into that cycle. The constituency is growing, and the demand is growing. It's a relatively green industry. When you look at the numbers of jobs and the economic growth that comes through senior living, and you compare that to manufacturing, assembly plants, other industrial complexes, it's a pretty handsome return on investment. You have to realize that for every household that you keep in the area, the older adult household is the wealthiest part of our population, so you're keeping those resources in the community and working in the community. That's donations at the church. It is supporting through volunteer hours, the United Way, the Salvation Army. So growing, embracing growth, and embracing continued expansion is beneficial for the county, is beneficial for your residents. We recommend managing growth instead of controlling growth, and the difference there is taking more of a collaborative effort, working with the community. And I'll turn and say to those of you who are residents of Cobb County, you want senior living expansion to come into your county. It won't be very long before one day for yourself or a family member, you're going to want access to quality facilities. So education is important. Collaboration between regulators, the community, developers can go a long way toward building win-win-win situations that'll benefit the community. Be very deliberate about it. Last, educating the community, educating the developers of the interests of the county, the interest of the community will go a long way toward making sure that those collaborative efforts fit your long-range planning. With that being said, that's a lot of information in a short period of time. I hope it was helpful in framing the conversation that you will continue to have. Dana was sharing with me that this conversation has been going on for about eight years. Hopefully it won't take another eight years to bring some vision to the table as far as senior living is concerned. I'll pause and answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Harris, thank you for being here and being with us today. We appreciate that. Catherine, I always welcome her. It was Catherine who made a presentation to this board some years ago when I sat down there where Commissioner Cupid is. It shows a map of different shades of blue that demonstrated the population shift that was occurring then, which led to our introduction of a strategic plan for our senior services department and what's going on that led to the conversation about the RSL, which you clearly identified. And brings us to where we are now, where the CCRC is becoming more of a consideration as a mix, as opposed to the independent, dependent RSL properties that we have. Where we, I think where we find ourselves as a community is with RSL, and I know that we've approved our version of RSL, almost six, seven, eight, nine RSL communities just this year, and they're either guaranteed, they're either quads or duplexes or single families that are geared towards a 55-plus lifestyle. We call RSL independent living, basically it's just a home on steroids for someone like Bob who needs a relatively small space on one floor with no steps.
Sure.
What comes with that, and Catherine, you're aware of this, and I know Dana is, it comes the next comment, the next phase of that conversation with, well, now what? And the implementation of a senior living strategy as it relates to what the RSL looks like from a terms of what density is right, in what proximity to existing lower density, what features of that residential property are important to that segment, that graph you showed, what services are becoming more of a need, and how does that get introduced to a household over the course of that aging population? And then more so with the CCRC, what should the mix be?
Sure.
Is there a way to look in a crystal ball and say, if you're doing a CCRC, it should be 80% dependent or critical care and 20% independent or dependent living from an RSL perspective? I think where we are as a community is how do we take this information, which is great in terms of, yeah, we have a need, and we know we have a need. I think we put our toe in the water with having an ordinance that addresses the housing, and we have a strategic plan with our senior services program to deal with active adults and having senior centers and having meals-on-wheeled programs and things of that nature. We have one of the, one of the best exercise routine, you know, wouldn't know it by Bob, but we have one of the best facilities for seniors to go to and exercise. But we need, really need help, I think, in figuring out what does it look like today to accommodate what's going to happen in 10 years, to make sure that what we're building today is relevant in 10 years, and what it features, functions, and specifically, where does it get put?
Sure.
How does it get put there, and how does it play into the mix of our other development needs we have aside from this segment? So I appreciate very much this, the look you, the dive you went into in terms of providing us where we are for the universe, and I'm confident that if I gave you another hour and a half, you could ask, you could answer everything that I just talked about. But I think where we need Dana, you to do, is get with Catherine and take it to the next level, because the goal here, Dana, is how does this impact our ordinances? And if so, where and how, and what do we need to be doing as a community to plan for the next, that tsunami of, tsunami is the wrong word, isn't it?
That's a relevant word.
Influx of seniors that are coming through, you know, which you're looking at one, as we transition through, I want to stay here, and to your point, it's not really age-related, it's mental and physical capability, and how do we accommodate that going forward? So you have a huge job in front of you, Dana, taking this great base of work and taking it to the next level, and I know Catherine can help you as well as Mr. Harris. Now, some of the other, hopefully you're not going to go far, because I know some of the other commissioners have a comment, beginning with our resident senior, Mr. Weatherford.
You're mighty brave letting me have the mic after all those comments. I just want to tell you that right now. I think we need to-
You'll forget what you said in a few minutes anyway.
We need to add one more category, you know, the psychological, the physical, and the calendar age, the appearance age, so the chairman looks much older than I am. And he's actually not, so that just goes to show.
There you go.
There you go. Some of the questions, and I wasn't sure where you got your numbers about, you said three, independent living or whatever, active develops. I know I've got at least five and three more on the way, 55 and older, so.
Commissioner, I'll answer that for you. A lot of what he was talking about were developments that have registered with the state as it relates to being a senior, where many of the developments that we have seen come from the private market are just to that, they're private market residences that have been brought forward, and they never register with the state as being a senior-focused community, sir.
Okay, good. Well, two of the things that come up the most when we have these come before us in zonings are the density that they sometimes request and require, because they don't own a yard, and they don't want to have all that kind of maintenance. Versus the intensity that they provide, and that's what I've been trying to say, the density may be there, but the intensity is less than it would be for a comparable R20, R30 subdivision with, you know, multiple children and cars and things like that. So those are things that we need from ARC or whatever to help us address those and sell the community. And the other is, our ordinance tends to say it needs to be in certain areas near certain commercial centers, and a lot of us just rather be out in the middle of nowhere and drive to those locations. So those are the two, the location and the intensity versus density that we need some facts on in the future, so if you could work on those, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner, the second deliverable, in addition to this presentation, they, Mr. Harris did have another deliverable with the Atlanta Regional Commission, and they did analyze our codes from a private market perspective, which I have a memo which I'm going to be handing out to all the commissioners, so you can see that information. We certainly also have a good idea of what the community response is from the conversations we've had with the community. So our challenge now is to take our community responses that we've received as to, as to the community desires, and kind of meld in some of our market desires in order to try to find a good balance between the two for consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments from other members of the board? Can we make sure- Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you.
She doesn't know what a senior is, by the way.
No comment.
On everybody.
I do have a question regarding the one CCRC development that was listed, which was Ostel Presbyterian Village. At the time we were reviewing the Isaacson application, it was shared that that was the first CCRC development coming in under the code. However, I had some familiarity with Ostel Presbyterian Village because it's at a central location and heavily utilized in the district. Can you explain a little bit about how that got to be a CCRC outside of that code and if that opens up doors for other similar facilities to be considered outside of the code?
Presbyterian Village is actually in an office institutional zoning category, which has a pretty broad range of uses that would be allowed. The purpose of the CCRC was to try to put together an ordinance that would meet a very specific market segment and make it easier for developers so they would be able to know what the county is looking for as it relates to building a CCRC in, in Cobb, where just using the ONI zoning district, you know, you're talking about everything from a possibly 15-story building to a more of a health institutional place. So the dichotomy is very different. So that the reason why the number of years ago at the wisdom of the board, they decided to put in place a CCRC was to try to give a little more specific direction to the private sector as well as give the community some assurances about what they'd be looking for as it relates to these type of ordinances.
Okay, with that then, today could a similar development come under ONI?
Absolutely.
Okay. Also, just another observation, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been my observation that we've had a lot of pushback from some of our retirement communities from those who might be more eligible for that type of housing. And it's, I find it very interesting where a lot of the comments are just keep our community as it is instead of this could actually be something that could be, that you could potentially be in the market for. And I don't know if there's a way to create a development that better showcases opportunity for that immediate area. You know, do they always have to be a standalone entity that they just see they have their community as something different? Is there a better way to tie it in so that people see it as it's a boon or an asset for them in a potential housing location for them?
I think, I mean, I'm going to add to that. I think the more integrated a senior community can be with a mixed type use of other type, the better for not only the community, but for the seniors themselves in terms of, when you talk about the brain, the physical, physio, physical characteristics and the actual appearance and things of that nature. Seniors and the community do best when they're integrated as opposed to segregated. It's just, it just, that's, that would be the preferred scenario, but we as a community, because density is associated with some senior living types, the community when introduced to that balks at it, not because of who the occupant of it is, but the, what they see when they drive by. So it's kind of, I mean, Hamilton would be a perfect place.
I agree. You know, something to consider then as we look at a different zoning code is, and perhaps it already has been and that's been considered in the code, but what type of uses should be between those communities? Should it just be, as Commissioner Weatherford shared, just a commercial center? But if it's not, if it's considered in a residential area, if we can give more thought as to what are some other things should be around there so it doesn't look as if it's something that is just misplaced in that setting?
Good, sure. Mr. Chairman, you know, I've been up here as long as you have doing this. I remember the first discussions we had and I think, and you had a slide that talked about the very thing we're talking about and it talked about how it was for the upper 30% economically. And I think that's really where the problem is. And that's where you get into the problem with densities and intensities because everything is thought of in terms of building new. And the reason, because I, actually District Two has the most, if you look at voter age population, I have the largest concentration of seniors. And what happens is, so for example, like in Indian Hills, we have folks that have been there for a really long time. It costs them infinitely more money to move into a facility than it does to stay where they're at. So in some ways, what probably needs to be looked at is not necessarily the county providing senior services like we do now, which are great services, but allowing private industry to maybe come into established neighborhoods that have a collection of older adults and maybe providing some of the services that are built into these retirement communities so that people don't have to move out of their house, they don't have to change the church, they don't have to change the store or the pharmacies that they go to. Because that's really why, what you're asking them to do, you're asking them to pick up and move. And especially in East Cobb where there is not a lot of land to develop these facilities. It may be that we need to kind of go one step further. And I know the chairman remembers that the folks standing here saying, we don't want to move, we want to stay in our communities. While the problem is in East Cobb, there is no place to build within their communities. So it may be that we have to transform or come up with ways to enhance the communities that they're already living in.
Yep. Aging a place, right Catherine?
If I could just maybe offer, the real true answer is you need more of everything, right? Because there is no one single way of aging. And there will be people who absolutely want, need, and it's the best option for them to stay in their home. And there are people who need to move and, and everything in between. And so the, the best advice about positioning for the future is to make sure that you have a diversity of choices because that's the way people make the most successful management of their own resources. And that's both for the aging at their current address, maybe aging down the street, maybe they want the same neighborhood, but they need a little bit more support. Maybe their spouse needs one kind of support and they need a different kind of support. So having those choices there. So it really is about more of everything. And I do want to underscore that one of the things that we have tried to look at and would continue to look at with you is affordability. Because it really isn't an option to you if you can't afford it. Doesn't matter that it exists. And so we do need to make sure that there is the full range of choices and that those choices are truly available for everyone. But Cobb is well positioned to be successful in this. But the, I think the one thing to remember is that there won't be one answer, there's going to be a lot of different answers.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Broll?
Yes. Dana, I assume you have this presentation and can email it to us?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Be happy to.
Some of the charts are helpful information that I'd like to keep.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. All good work. Catherine, thanks for coming up and visiting with us. Mr. Harris, thank you as well for being with us. So this will take us to item number two, which is old item number one. The presentation of community development concerning our changes in Cobb County code. By the way, the TV cameras are here for you for this, not the senior.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have Ms. David Blair here with me from the county attorney's office, and we are going to present for you the code amendments being considered in the September and October code amendment cycle, sir. As you may know, codes are considered by the Board of Commissioners from time to time. And currently we have three, three different codes that are up for consideration. Two of these codes are codes where the board had specifically asked for them to come back prior to the end of the year. And that's the review of the vending ordinance as well as the accessory special event parking ordinance. The third ordinance, which was being brought forward by staff, is a result of a potential decision by the Board of Commissioners tonight as it relates to the budget. Or if the board makes a decision on a budget as it relates to certain fees for signs, then this code would be needed in order to activate that. First up tonight will be the vending code, sir. And the purpose of the vending ordinance is to create a mechanism where vending carts would be allowed within certain mixed-use development districts to allow for the sale of food, drink, and merchandise. There are some concerns that were expressed about the violation section of this ordinance when it was brought forward and approved in February. Rather than spelling out the violations for misdemeanors, staff instead has just referenced state law as such. Since the violation section of most of our codes of ordinances are misdemeanors under the laws of the state of Georgia, the change will then comport with state law and just mirror state law in that regard. The second one, sir, deals with the accessory special event parking code. The purpose of the accessory special event parking ordinance is to address issues of traffic flow, pedestrian safety, protection of personal property, and preserving neighborhood integrity by establishing an easy and common sense process for parking that is used to supplement that which has been provided, that will be provided for special events in Cobb County. This code is necessary because it will provide a mechanism for the county to take all parking operations of special events into consideration for the management of traffic flow, pedestrian flow during special events. The application process was simplified versus the previous version that was considered by the board, where a business that wishes to provide parking can obtain approval from the community development agency without needing a hearing with the Board of Commissioners. Only businesses that do not meet the safety requirements outlined in the code would be required to have a hearing in front of the board in order to get their license. As part of this recommendation, the half-mile buffer, which was previously in the code that's on the books now, was removed from consideration in, in the code. As applications are submitted for consideration, staff will have 15 days to review completed applications. If approval is not, or approval or denial is not granted within that 15 days, then the application will be considered granted. During that 15-day review time, staff with community development, public safety, and the Department of Transportation will all work together to review the application to ensure that the safety concerns outlined in the code have been addressed. The code has maintained the majority of the operational requirements that are in the code that was provided back in February. These include requirements for signage, attendance, lot, lot requirements, lighting, and cleanup afterwards. So all of those operational requirements that were in the previous code have been brought forward. There has been one change as it relates to the operational requirements, and this relates to the number of attendants on site. The previous code said that there would be two attendants per lot. The current code as drafted says two attendants per lot plus an additional attendant for each additional 100 spaces. What that means is under 200 would mean two people per lot. If you have two, 205, it would be three persons on that particular lot, just to give you a sense of scale. Therefore, the number of tents are scaling up with the number of parking spaces that are there to be managed at in that particular location. Finally, the hearing procedures, appeals, offenses, and penalties that were updated to be, to change with the tone and the tenor of the ordinance that was put forward to be more about trying to help people get approval rather than, rather than finding a way to, to, to roadblock something. So not that was trying to roadblock it before, but the tenor of the ordinance has changed as more of a mechanism for approval and to help people understand how to get approval for their particular operation. The authority ordinance again deals with sign fees. Tonight, the board will consider a budget. One of the recommendations in the budget is to amend the sign fees that were brought forward by staff for consideration. We brought this forward to make it easier for our customers. Right now, sign fees are based upon a percentage of a total sign cost. So as a person who is trying to obtain a sign permit comes in, they might not know coming in what the cost is for their sign fee to be. We've changed the structure of it to be based on the size of the sign. So depending on the size of the sign, the, the price of the sign will scale up with the size. This makes it very easy for, easy for our customers coming into their office, into our office, they'll know what the fee is before they even walk in. And because we noticed that the sign fee was actually listed in the code, this had to be brought forward as a code change in order to activate it. There will be two public hearings in regard to these three ordinances, September 27th tonight at seven o'clock as well as October the 25th at seven o'clock. These will be the two official public hearings for the consideration of these codes. After the second public hearing, the board would be able to consider any of the codes that are brought forward today. The planning commission will make a recommendation on the sign fee only at a public hearing on October the 4th at nine o'clock in the morning. All of those public hearings will take place right here in the second floor Board of Commissioners meeting room at 100 Cherokee Street in Marietta. And with that, sir, Ms. Blair and I will be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Going back to the parking amendments, Eric, could you explain the fee structure or the permit fees for that particular one, what it is now, sir?
Yes, sir. Currently, currently there is a, a application fee and a regulatory fee that have been approved. If the board, I will bring forward on the end of the October meeting, a agenda item to remove the regulatory fee from consideration, sir. So the $1,000 regulatory fee will be something that we'll be asking the board to consider and removing from it, therefore would only have a minor application fee as part of the process.
What is that fee?
I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to double check, I think it's $50, but I would have to double check that to make sure I'm correct on it, sir.
Below 100 is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And if it's, and if it's, and if it is different than that, I'll probably bring forward a change to make it $50, sir. Or ask you to consider making it $50, it's more appropriate.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner Broll?
And was the distance requirement removed as well? The mile radius?
Yes, ma'am. The half-mile radius, which was in the previous code as it related to special event venues, has been removed from the code, ma'am.
But they, but regardless, they would still have to meet all the requirements to obtain a permit?
Yes.
They would need to meet the operational requirements as outlined in the code. As long as they meet the operational requirements, we will be happy to give them a permit, ma'am.
So is the permit, once they, the $50 for the application, once the permit is approved, is there a fee for the permit or is that the regulatory fee that's being removed?
The, the application fee would be submitted with, with the submittal of the application, and there would be no other fees associated with this if, if the board removes the regulatory fee.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner?
Thank you. As of today, which sites qualify under this code? Is it just KSU and the stadium or are there other sites?
The, what is covered under this code is listed as major tourist attractions, which means 12 acres or more devoted to a single use as, as a amusement park attraction, park convention center, performing arts center, amphitheater, or stadium, which promote the tourist interests of the county.
Okay. So this could be a variety of sites. Let's say, you know, I think of Kennesaw Battlefield, people charging for parking around that.
I'm not sure the battlefield would be covered under that, but I certainly think that things like the Mabel House, the KSU Center, the Cobb Performing Arts Center, SunTrust Park, those type of venues would certainly be covered under this particular ordinance.
Okay. And are they continually covered or only when there are events going on that day?
The, the accessory special event license is only for the provision of parking during a special event.
Okay. And are there other sites that are in, you know, comparable sites that we are benchmarking this code from, that we've reviewed and creating this one?
There are a number of different ordinances that we looked at in the process of drafting both the previous code as, as well as this one.
Anyone locally? Anyone locally?
We actually did look at the city of Atlanta's code that they have as it relates to parking around Turner Field as part of the process. We did not use a lot of their language because it was a lot more restrictive than what our ordinance is. So in an effort to try to work with the business community, we did not want to make it as restrictive as the current ordinance around Turner Field.
Okay, very good. Can you speak around the policy interest of, again, us providing this code? I know we talked about it for safety. There was some discussion as to whether or not we even need a code. Our policy consideration, is this from a traffic management perspective, pedestrian safety pers-
Yes, it's, this code, they have to submit what we're calling an impact statement as to how they're going to address traffic concerns and, and public safety- to how they're going to address traffic concerns and, and public safety, that kind of thing. And in conjunction with the review by community development, we're also anticipating working with public safety and DOT as far as traffic goes. Because of course, that's, that a lot of people, a lot of congestion there. So, so that's a primary, a primary concern.
Okay. So, the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much, Dana. We appreciate the presentation. Of course, having legal support is always good for you. Thank you for being here, Dana. I believe that concludes our work session. Is that correct, Mr. McCullers? Thank you. We are adjourned until 7:00 tonight. Thank you.